Gordon Eggleton.
Absent.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norakis.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Absent.
Henry Quant.
Here.
And Alex Ward.
Absent. Stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance. And to the Republic. One nation. For all.
Thank you, and it's nice to see warm bodies in the audience again. You know, we seem to attract more all the time. Thank you. Phil Kelzey, could I bother you with a question before we get too far into this? Tonight, we have four councilors out of seven, so we have a quorum. So clearly, we're fine. On any votes that taken, is it a majority of the sitting councilors?
Majority of those present.
Of those present. Okay, that's why I just want to make sure. So it doesn't have to be all four voting for the, though they can. Three to one works.
I guess three to one or four zero.
Gotcha.
Or two-two, and it thinks, yeah.
Then we can have a coin toss. We've done before.
Or one-three, yes. But just don't do another coin toss.
Oh, okay. All right. With that, thank you. Just planning ahead. We, next item would be comments from citizens. Comments from citizens. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time to exchange of questions. As a conclusion of this agenda item, a councillor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. Mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comments in accordance with the number of persons present and signed to speak. We, looks like a light load tonight. Brian Green would be the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Brian Green. I'm a homeowner in the proposed sewer and paving LID, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the DLWID. I'm also the person referred to in your packet, in your memorandum, as the petitioner who worked with the staff and the engineer during the development of the engineering report. And I'd like to thank the staff and the engineer, Mr. Krimp, for letting me participate in that. And given my five-minute limit, I just want to point out what I think are the three big-picture points that I think merit your approval of the report as filed. First, we as a community have recognized for decades the necessity to sewer Devil's Lake if we're ever going to get the nutrient loading problem under control and get the upper hand on that. And get the upper hand on all of the adverse effects caused to Devil's Lake by nutrient loading. It's the single biggest threat to the health of the lake. And finally, now, the technology is available to replace septic systems with affordable and cost-effective sewer systems. Secondly, the cost will be borne only by the property owners receiving the direct benefit of both sewer and paving. The cost will not be borne by the city. It will not be borne by other taxpayers. It will not be borne by other property owners. It'll be borne by those property owners receiving a sewer line to their property and a road to their property. And those are the property owners who support this project and are willing to pay for it by a three-to-one majority. Thirdly, of the 25% who do not expressly support the LID, only four of those folks actually gave me a reason. And the reasons always boiled down to cost. They were all owners of existing homes older than mine, which is 25 years old. The engineers' report recommends, after much negotiation, a mandatory connection date of 15 years from now. So these peoples, these objectors, septic systems would be more than 40 years old, if not replaced by the mandatory connection date by sewer. I can't find any literature that says that a properly maintained septic system has a useful life of more than 30 years. So, I mean, and the cost of replacing an existing septic system is just about the same under today's requirements as the cost per homeowner of installing the small, high-pressure line recommended in the engineers' report and hooking up to it. And the common thread in all the reasoning of the few opponents is that they make no allowance for ever having to replace their existing system. But realistic, reasonable people should and do make that allowance, and that's why this project has 75% support among the LID property owners who will be paying the bill. Now, we do have a commitment for 15-year financing at 4% for the initial sewer line and the paving portion. So, I mean, this is a sound project. It's well thought out in a cooperative manner by the city staff, the engineer, and property owners that promises to at least start solving one of the more intractable problems in protecting Devil's Lake. And I hope you will approve of the engineers' report as filed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. The five minutes wasn't aimed at you, but I'm glad you were able to work under the lights.
I've learned my lesson, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Oxenholt.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm here. I understand that there may be a future additional public hearing specific on, specific to the LID that Brian just spoke about, but I wanted to get on the record early as also being in support of the engineering report as filed and the local improvement district sewer-ing and pavement project. In short, seems like a no-brainer. It's one of the few pockets, and I'm a property owner within the proposed local improvement district. Seems like a no-brainer. The vast majority of property owners support it. It gives the opportunity to sewer one of the last remaining pockets on the west side and in close proximity to the lake. So just wanted to get on the record early, and I'll perhaps speak again if that opportunity arises. I heard I missed out on a bit of a lively meeting in the last session, so it seems like a pretty...
Whose session?
Okay. I'm a little behind.
The meeting before the last meeting.
But it's good to see you all.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming forward.
Also, I know that Dave Krimp, the engineer that worked on this, he's been very receptive to questions from the public, and I know the same for staff. So I just wanted to commend staff and Dave Krimp on this project. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who didn't get an opportunity to sign up, this would be the time to come forward. Pleased to have you. Seeing none, then we'll move ahead to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, these are items, these items are considered routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any councillor may request that an item be removed for separate discussion in action. The consent agenda consists of, number one, the Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, electric vehicle connectivity corridor program, and, number two, Jennifer Sears glass studio contract. I'm removing the number-two Jennifer Sears glass studio.
I'd like to remove number one, Mr. Mayor.
Then. Thus, no consent agenda items, and why don't we move to the electric vehicle connectivity corridor program. Mr. Norakis, questions?
Mr. Olson, could you give us a summary of this item?
I'll move through the slides that we saw earlier and get to this item. So as you're aware, a year or so ago, ODOT got a, I believe it's a federal grant to install electric vehicle charging stations in the I-5 corridor and also down highway, I mean, Highway 101. They, these green dots show where they were, they are anticipating putting them along the coast, as there's Astoria, Cannon Beach, Tillamook, Lincoln City, Newport, Yahots, Florence, and so on. We went through a lengthy process here in Lincoln City. They attempted to place the unit on some private, on private property, but really weren't able to find an adequate location, and so then came to us and said, ask if we could come up with some city-owned properties. And the one that seemed to make the most sense after quite a bit of discussion was the site at the D-Lake School, Lincoln City Cultural Center. And before I get to go any further, I wanted to show that in addition to the sites along the coast, they're also going to place one of these units halfway to the coast. So in Lincoln City, there'll be one at Grand Wound as well. In Astoria, there'll be one in Clatscanai. In Florence, they're putting one in No-Ties so that cars can get more than, in case they can't get all the way or don't feel like they can get all the way. So the site at Lincoln, the cultural center was found to have adequate power. That was the biggest issue, was the three-phase power, and it was, it has it, it has it, it's one of the sites that has it, so this site was delved into to see if it was going to work. So we looked at the location in the back, in the parking lot areas. You can kind of see where it's up there near the top in really light, it says future parking layout, and then in the, kind of the gray is, is, it looks like a parking lot drawn on the ground. That's an overlay of this drawing, which Scott Edwards did during the remodel work that he did with the D-Lake School for the cultural center, and developed this parking lot layout. And so that, we took their layout and to determine where might the best location for these sites would be, and so this looked like the area that was going to suit people the best. And so we talked to the cultural center, and in your packet, I believe you have a letter of support from them saying that they are fine with this. I think then, I mentioned earlier, but for the viewing audience, I'll mention again, that we, there was an agreement that we kicked around for several months to get these installed. The funding, I believe, runs out at the first of the year, and so we moved forward with their agreement as quickly as we could here recently. I believe the ones in Newport and in Yahots are already installed. The one in Astoria is installed, and I'm not sure about the one in Cannon Beach and Seaside. If there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, council? Henry?
Yeah, I've got a question. I was bringing this up in urban renewal, but I had quite a few questions. I asked Kurt some questions when we were doing this in urban renewal, and a couple of them was, what kind of cars would be facilitated by this fast charging system?
Okay, I found those answers to those questions. There's two cars, actually.
Okay.
There is the Nissan Leaf, and Mitsubishi has a car. It's like an IMI, and that's the name of the car, that's what they call it, anyway. Those are the two that are being built currently that can handle the Level 3 charge, which is that fast charge.
Okay. And one of the other questions you just thought up recently was, is this thing ADA accessible?
Well, we, everything that we have had, every conversation that we've had talks about that. There were several sites that were disregarded because of the slope of the parking lot. And so I took a look at their requirements, and in it, it says that all prospective host sites, whether public or private, must comply with all laws, state and federal, prohibit the discrimination, race, religion, color, or disability. So it looks to me like they're making every effort to make sure that they are.
Okay. And then, what kind of charging units are we going to install here at the cultural center?
Okay, they're installing two. What you see on the right-hand side, the big thing, yeah, to your right, two, is the Level 3 charging station, and they tell me that that's actually sort of a misnomer, that it's actually called something else. But it, so that's a Level 3, and that's the fast charge. It should charge a car up in about a half an hour or two an hour. And the one, the little thing to the right, not where it says parking, but just that little green dot, that is a Level 2 station, and that's the 220 station that'll charge a vehicle in a couple, in four to eight hours, something like that. So they're installing two stations. What we currently have are Level 2 stations. We have four in Lincoln City currently.
And these are fee-based? The ones behind the cultural center will be fee-based, right?
That's correct. There will be a charge for those, for those, for these, yes.
Okay, because then that opens up questions for the city manager and things like this, about what are we going to do about the ones we have free? And then we have a private corporation that's going to be charging. I, you know, I see a little bit of conflict of interest there.
We can charge for our stations anytime. I have felt that the publicity value weighs the 20 or 30 bucks a year, 50 bucks a year, whatever it is, at this time. Obviously, when you start getting much higher, I don't think we'd have much choice, but that's certainly within your jurisdiction to make that call.
Other questions of council? Mr. Norakis?
Kurt, any idea why they don't put in two Level 3s? Why put in another Level 2?
Nope, I didn't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And...
It doesn't cost, because the Level 3s are around like $100,000. The ones we bought were about $4,000.
Okay, okay. And in terms of maintenance, I see that these will be maintained by the installer. The stations that we currently have, are those maintained by the installer as well, or do we maintain those?
Well, we maintain the area around that, you know. But the, when something has gone wrong with them, they have, they have provided us with replacement parts at no cost. The cost we've incurred has been installing them, which is usually like a 15-minute electrician to unscrew, pull out the heads, and plug them back in. And it doesn't require an electrician, but I just haven't felt comfortable doing it myself or passing it on to public works, and so we've hired an electrician to do that.
What we're getting is essentially, as I understand it, warranty work. When there is, at some point, and when there's a total failure or something, we're going to have to pay for the replacement if we want to replace it. Or if it's vandalized, for example. Okay? We can't expect the people that supplied it to pay for that. We've had really good luck so far with that.
That was my next question. We haven't had maintenance issues on the four that we currently have installed?
There have been issues, but they've been related to the upgrading. You know, we initially put in Level 1 stations, and so they came, and we bought Level 1 stations, and they said when Level 2 came out, they would upgrade them at no charge, and they did. There have been some other glitches. I think there was at one point, we replaced all the heads because they had upgraded something in their system. And then occasionally, we'll get a phone call from them, so we go down and check this station and see what's going on and what the code says or on it. And when that's happened, they've just sent us a new head to replay, to put in there. That's maybe happened three times where there's been some anomaly.
Okay. And number six on the land lease agreement talks about improvements and good and workmanlike manner, the work being conducted in a workmanlike manner. I'm wondering about inspections and how we determine whether or not that's been accomplished.
I think they have to get an electrical permit from the county and a county inspection.
And a county inspection.
That may not be true of the electronics themselves.
Right.
Of the wiring that comes under the, under the county's jurisdiction and building, and electrical permit.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Gary, do you have any questions?
No, David's entirely right. Actually, it's the state, and the county has the inspector. They have to comply with the state electrical code.
And I did notice also in the contract that there's a revenue sharing or the city gets a 5% fee for having this on-site. Okay?
One more.
Please.
Kurt, do you know the charge for the Level 2 and Level 3? The cost?
No, I'm not sure of the Level 3. The Level 2 was less than $5 if we were to, if we were to charge them. So it isn't, it isn't as simple as just saying, hey, it costs $5 or $20, because people that have these cars, as I understand it, will sign up for some plan. And that plan, you can pay $100 a month for unlimited charges, or you can pay $50 a month for 10 charges, or, you know, that sort of thing. So it's a little hard to just say it's a certain cost.
Will, will the individual wanting to charge have a credit card that he uses to...
Yeah, they'll have, they'll have some sort of an ID card. We have them, you know, I have one, but you just swipe it in front of it, and it logs in that you've done. If you don't have, if you're not part of one of these networks, you can either call a number, like on ours right now, it has a phone number you can call, and give them your card number, and then you can use, activate the machine. Or, but I think the new ones allow you to use your credit card and charge it directly to your credit card.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I've got two more questions. Okay, on the fast charger, okay, when, if and when that the automobile manufacturers here in America decide to have the capabilities of doing that, are they going to upgrade this thing? Or do we have to add another station? Or what happens then? Because right now, you're working with Nissan, the Nissan Leaf, and the Mitsubishi, the only two that's going to use the fast charge.
Right.
Okay, when the stuff comes available for the American models to use this, are they going to upgrade this, or we have to put another station in, or what happens then?
I believe they've standardized these. I'm not sure about the Level 3, but I believe the Level 2 is standardized.
I'm referring to Level 3.
Okay.
That's what I'm referring to, is Level 3. Because I can see right now, if we put this Level 3 in here, and then six months from now, Volt decides to put out one, then we have another one, and then, you know, Ford puts out one, then we have another one.
Well, I think the market forces would be against that because of the huge investment that's going in, even if it's not standardized. I think it'd be kind of foolish to bring out a car that doesn't work on stations that are being installed all over the place.
My understanding was that at least Canada, I want to say British Columbia, and Washington and Oregon discussed that issue. It was in materials that I think were presented to you a while back, if I remember correctly. And that was one of the first issues that they had to resolve when they were trying to make the three-area connectivity for I-5 charging stations, was they needed to, I think there were two choices for that fast charge, and they had to agree on one. So whether that will be the market, I don't, I don't know. My memory may not be correct, but I think that issue was dealt with.
You're pretty darn close.
Oh, God.
Not that you're wrong, but there's some, there's some gray area there. The, the Level 2 stations have been adopted, there's a universal plug for the Level 2 stations. The Level 3 stations, the standard's only been approved in Japan, where the cars are. The United States hasn't approved that plug-in yet. I think you were intimating something, and I had got the information about, there's an ambitious statewide goal of having 30,000 plug-in vehicles in Oregon by year 2015. Vicious.
Other questions?
Kurt, one more. Have we had any trouble with corrosion, salt air corrosion on the...
No, they seem to be holding up really well.
Good, good. Thanks.
All done? Okay. Any other questions, Kurt? Then at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the city and the, or is it urban renewal? I guess it's city.
No, here, urban renewal approved that, I believe. What you are approving is the location as being acceptable to the council, because council previously raised that issue.
Okay.
About which locations in the city would be acceptable, and the installer turned down a lot of those, and we're kind of left with this as one that was presented to you. So it would be accepting this as a location in the city.
Acceptable location for this actual agreement.
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in, this could just be a voice. All those in favor of the motion and a second? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. And then the Jennifer Sears glass studio contract was also in this area, and as you recall, this was the one where it's the personal service agreement in your packet. Thank you, Sandy. And in your packet, it was outlined, the areas in red were the additions or clarification And questions that council has, Sandy? Thank you, Sandy, for coming forward.
I have a few, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Sandy, on that PSA B1 refers to, the studio may close each year from January 2 through the Friday immediately preceding Martin Luther King Weekend. What's the date on that, Martin Luther King?
I want to tell you, it's about the 18th of January, 19th, right in there. It's like the third full weekend.
Only a couple of weeks.
Just a couple of weeks, that's right.
Okay. And that same page, B4, contractor shall conduct its operations during times when visiting glass artists are using the premises. I didn't realize they had visiting glass artists using the premises.
They do from time to time. That's how they get some of their interns also. So as people pass through from one end of the country or from Canada to here, they stop by and share their expertise with each other.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
As signing leases and things like this, some of the equipment still belongs to the city or the VCB?
A little bit of it does.
And that's being tracked how? And I know, I know they're replacing it and things like this, but for that sake, clarifying, in case something happens to whoever holds this piece of pit, what equipment's there, what are they responsible for if they lose their lease, or they break the lease, or whatever? So when the lease, it does come to an end, how do we know it belongs to them or what belongs to the city and for tax purposes? and things like this? Is there a list that comes with this or?
We had an original list that was part of this contract. It's part of what was confusing last time. From that original list, we still have some of that equipment which has been tagged with numbers, the way we do with city property. The stuff that, some stuff goes away. I think you recall.
I, 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 after some time, you know, they're, they're replacing the stuff and things like that, but for the city of definition. So then in case something comes up, they come up, oh, we paid for this, but no, you didn't. It belongs to the city or something like this. I think there should be something that goes along with the contract showing us, you know, when they do replace the stuff, we take it off the list. You see what I'm saying here? So that way, in case something happens that we have, the contract is broken or something like that and they decide to move out, that we've got the city property identified and then their private property identified.
The property.
It also makes policy for tax purposes and everything else like that. So it gives them a chance to write it off and also the other foot is to pay.
The original list of property that we purchased has been tagged. So if it's not tagged, it belongs to them. It's a, if they say it's a replacement issue and we don't have a similar tagged one, then it's been replaced. I pretty much know what needs to be replaced and what doesn't. But understand that the property gets identified in a list every year and metal tags are actually placed on the property to help us track them throughout the city regardless of whether they're at the glass studio or the cultural center or some other location. So we know where things go.
I, I might help out a little bit. The bulk of our investment in the equipment was equipment that's actually attached to the building.
Right.
It's the gas and ventilation equipment and interconnecting electronics that go with the safety of all that. That's probably, I'm going to guess, but probably 80% of, of our investment was in things that are actually part of the building at this point.
That's correct. There, the safety train is attached to the building and it was probably $30,000. The, the hoods and so forth, all of those things. What you're concerned about is the movable things and those are the things I'm saying are tagged.
Okay. That's, that was my question. I didn't know. It says, says equipment in the, in the contract here and says, you know, and I hear Ms. Kelly was saying that, well, she's replaced some of this equipment. So I'm trying to figure out what equipment we're talking about here, you know, and being a leaser and lease or, and you see, you're getting problems when people decide to break leases and things like this and you move out and you take some of the property with you and then you have problems. So as long as everything's properly identified, then there's no problem. And the second question is responsibility for ADA. Maintaining the property in an ADA standard and things like this, I don't know, cause you know.
Well, just, just so you know, this is not a lease. It's a personal services agreement. So I, I think if the, if there, if there is an ADA issue, it may be the city's ADA issue unless we shift that to whoever's providing the services under this agreement.
Okay.
Other, other questions? Gary, any questions? Sandy, you're going, oh.
No, I just, I'm, I'm glad we have got them as a, as a partner down there.
Well, I noted as, as we went through, the, the highlights for, well covered. We wanted to free up the retail space so that they could sell some of their glass works there.
Correct.
And then the, the note, I appreciated as far as trying to, I guess, put our foot in the door is we may want to, some of that space back to do something else with. Is that how I, I interpret the contractor also agrees to work in good faith with the city to release approximately a third?
The southwest, the showroom is southeast. So the southwest corner is the corner you never see.
Oh, okay.
And you might not want to. They collect a lot of things back there that need to be better organized.
Ah.
But we're working on an arrangement with another group of people who may be interested in doing another hands-on down in that same location. And so I, before we went any further with anything, I wanted to be sure that these folks would at least consider doing that. That could cause an alteration of the showroom space too, just for egress and ingress or whatever aggress it is. So that's why that's there.
Got it. Got them on notice then if we make.
Yes.
Okay. And thank you for the attempt to try to find a way that we can kind of have bigger families leave with something tangible from their experience there.
And we'll experiment with other ones too, to see what works best and what makes people happiest. So we'll have a better idea. As we did when we started this project, a year into it, you finally figure out what you're supposed to be doing. So hopefully they'll do that again for me.
And I'm, I, city attorney's comment was a good one, that we're the owners of the property and responsible for the property. So that would include the exterior landscaping. So that's what.
Correct.
And I think that's all I had. So it hit the high points from our discussion and looked to see what we'd hoped to be in here. So is that counsel all right with that?
Yes.
So, you know, with that, then I'd, any comments or?
I have nothing else to say.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the service, personal service agreement as proposed.
Still move.
Seconded.
We have a motion with a second to approve the glass center personal service agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you, Sandy. Good work.
Yeah, nice job, Sandy.
And next order of business is special order of business. We have at least a couple of committee appointments. I am going to ask council's indulgence to hold off on items three, four, excuse me, four, five and six and deal with at another meeting. And it's primarily because item G10 may impact appointments. And so I want to just make sure we're in sync before we make appointments, if that's all right? So dealing with the appointments for Parks Department, Steve Griffith, actually Gary and I interviewed Steve Griffith and Ray, made the recommendation to move him through the process and appoint him, bring him before tonight for reappointment to this Parks Board. He's currently on the Parks Board and has been chairman this last period. Had good discussion. So I would certainly make the recommendation for the council to approve that appointment.
And I'd like to second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion then to have Steve Griffith appointed to the Parks Board.
Make a motion to approve Stephen Griffith's, the Parks Board?
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? And the other one, we have an appointment to the Arts Committee. And in this one, Mr. Eggleton, Councilor Eggleton and I interviewed Paul Minstrata for the Arts Committee and again, found him very strong. He's part of the farmer's market currently in Lincoln City and is an artist himself and has asked to be a member of this committee. And again, Mr. Eggleton and I, he's absent, but gave me his proxy to make that recommendation. So I'd entertain a motion to approve Paul Minstrata to the Arts Committee.
Still move.
Seconded.
All those in favor of the recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Then we have Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, an update.
I believe you did not need a PowerPoint, right?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, thanks for the opportunity to update you on our project at US 101 in Nelscott District. Good news is, we're on schedule. Our design is about 30% completed right now. We've completed what we call the first phase, which is the DAP phase of plans. Our next phase is preliminary design. And during preliminary design is when, one of the things that we do is identify utility conflicts. And that's what we'll be bringing back to you this winter. We're still on schedule for a bidlet in February of 2014. Now in 2014, we're going to be going into construction. It's likely, very likely, that we'll have a two-season construction. So that would be the summer of 2014 and the summer of 2015. And also keeping in mind the traffic that happens during the summer in Lincoln City, most of that construction will happen at night. So I just want to make sure to give everybody a heads up a year in advance of what to expect. We're going to keep you informed as we move closer and closer to construction on what to expect, excuse me, and also during construction, our construction project manager will keep everybody informed as we move through construction phases too. The other thing that we're working on right now is an intergovernmental agreement. It's been drafted and it's basically outlining the roles and responsibilities of ODOT and of the city as we move forward through design into construction and into maintenance. So it outlines things like maintenance responsibilities, how we're going to approach our right-of-way acquisition and things like that. We've gotten some feedback from the city staff and we're working out the language. And I, I think that's going to move quite smoothly and I expect that we should have some sort of a, a draft document available for you in December, at January at the latest. Now I have some not so good news. Our early estimate for this project is about $19.3 million. That's, that's very early. We only have about $12.6 million right now. So our shortfall is a little under $7 million. We knew that we would be short. We've known that we're going to be short for a number of, for quite a while now. We just didn't know how much. And now fairly early in the design, we know that we're going to have a shortfall. Now there's contingencies that are built into this design right now into our estimate. And so we know that those contingencies will likely come down in the future. And so our gap is going to likely shrink, but we don't know how much yet. So as we move forward, we'll keep you informed in that. And we're working on some other ideas.
And so first, I think we want to thank the city staff for their collaboration and for funds that have been identified to date. That helps us make up the shortfall and we really do appreciate any contribution, especially in today's economy. We've talked about different options to reduce costs. We'll continue to work with city staff on things that maybe we can pare back. We've talked about the landscaping, making some small changes to the landscaping design that could save quite a bit of money. One of the other things that we've talked about is there is about a million dollar separated sidewalk. So it is possible to potentially construct that as a later phase and go after some of the 2016, 2018 STIP funds that are now available. So I've asked Jerry to do an application because the application period closes tomorrow. If that's not something that's supported, then we can always pull that application at a later date, but I'd hate to miss out on a funding opportunity. We'll also reach out to others and we've talked to the mayor about some potential help, working with the communities around you. Any improvements to 101 certainly have a benefit to, at a minimum, the county as well as others traveling up and down the coast. And so we'll look for funding that way. There's other options to maybe carve off parts of other projects outside of Lincoln City within our area and take a look at those to transfer funds from one project to another. But we're faced with a budget shortfall. And so we're trying to get that number down as much as possible by change, making small modifications to the design, but not diminishing the benefits. Questions?
I might inform the council that, actually Jerry and Amy have been very good and have met with Mr. Rocker and I a couple of times over these topics and others. So I'm real pleased publicly that you, and I want to say that the cooperation and the transparency and the sharing of information promptly has been, you know, real helpful. And yeah, we always hate bad news. So I live in that fancy, fantasy world where I thought you'd just come in and make it happen. But yeah, these are the, the things that we had talked about, trying to find some savings or delay in construction. I think that's what Amy was talking about with the sidewalk. It's not that it doesn't get done, it just gets done later, assuming we can then apply or apply now for some future funds. It's a competition, but it's still, you know, staying there. Other questions that council might have of ODOT? Go ahead, Chester.
The sidewalk that you mentioned, Amy, is that the one that was going to impact the quote historic building unquote?
No, the sidewalk I've mentioned is just south of 23rd that goes behind Baldi Creek and matches back in at 29th on the east side of the highway. So you're talking, I think you're asking about the sidewalk on 32nd Street?
Yes.
I'm going to defer to Jerry.
Yeah, there's, there've been some discussions about the sidewalk at the historic home there at the Mercantile Building. And there's a couple of things that are colliding at that intersection. One is that we have some sight distance issues coming from the east to the west. So we have to raise up the grade about three feet. And the other side is, the other piece of this is the ADA accessibility. And those two things collide right there at that, at the Mercantile Building. And we have a couple of different options on how we can address that. And I think it's better suited if I have some drawings that I can bring in. And I'd like to do that perhaps in December or January, maybe when your schedule opens up a little bit, your calendar. We can, I can go through those and we can talk about, you know, what it means to have it up, up against the building and what it means to be away a little bit further. So if you don't mind, I'd like to just defer that.
That would be fine. Thank you.
Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but neither one of those, you know, I would encourage those discussion and, and stuff, but neither one of them would add to a closing this gap? Is that fair?
No, it won't make much of a difference at all.
But that being a separate issue, but, and important, but not closing. Same with sidewalks. Now, as I recall, the plan has sidewalks on both sides. So your proposal would be to stay a sidewalk on the west side?
Yes.
And so there would be finally a safe means, it would just delay the east side.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Other questions?
Okay.
Is, is there something, actions we need to take or, cause certainly I'm well familiar with, we're working on the intergovernmental agreement and pursuing that. And, you know, the timelines always stagger us, me, that how long it takes for permits and then construction. I, I heard and appreciate the nightly to the best you can work efforts to avoid congestion on that as we're, we're going.
I don't believe there's any action needed from the council. At this moment, we'll follow up with, with David and city staff on our ideas for cost reduction in the future. We just wanted to open that up for conversation, especially regarding the separated sidewalk.
Sir, any thoughts on the separated, you're all right? Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We need just to have one sidewalk going up there. That, that's good.
Okay. Thanks very much. Thanks for traveling over.
You're here.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
All right. Next item is the Lake Drive Local Improvement District, LID Engineering Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So staff today is presenting the report that Mr. Green and Mr. Oxenholz talked about earlier. It's a report to form a local improvement district. And just to give a little bit of history, and I'll talk about the process and some clarifications in the staff memo. So on February 14th, council received a petition from the property owners expressing interest in creating a district, looking at sewer and paving for approximately 50 lots near Regatta Park. And then we came back later with a resolution that awarded the engineering contract to Clearwater Engineering to do the report. With me tonight is David Krimp from Clearwater Engineering. He's here to present the report and to answer any questions that you have. So tonight with the report, you have an option for four actions. You can approve the report as filed. You can make amendments or changes to it tonight. You can ask for further information and we would just come back to you later with that information. That would be the only action would be come back to you with more information. Or you can abandon the proposed improvement. If you approve the report, either with minor changes or as, as presented tonight, we'll come back at the next council meeting in December. back at the next council meeting in December with a resolution for you to approve. Then after that resolution to approve the report is passed, then we announce a public hearing. So we'll notify, we'll begin the public hearing notification process after the December meeting, again, assuming that you approve the report and you want to go forward with the resolution. Then the public hearing will actually be held on the second, in the council meeting on January, in January, on the 14th, I believe. So the process clarification, there are 17 steps to the LID process and we're, this is number three, where we present the report. So we're looking for a motion, I guess, or questions.
Do you have anything you want to do on the report itself?
David, would you like to give a brief summary and talk a little bit about the report?
Well, the report identifies a sewer service area and a pavement service area, counts the number of lots, and tallies the assessed value for your consideration so you can make sure that the LID is in proportion to the, to the tax base. Prevent, present some technical information on pressure sewers. They're kind of a strange or new breed of sewer to some municipalities, although they're very common throughout the country. And we've also kept an open mind to listening to the various constituents in the area. I'm always willing to call people up if they had a problem with the district, try to respond to those concerns ahead of time. The report contains a pre-designed level cost estimate, which is apportioned among those in the district. And it contains conditions upon which people would be required to hook up to the sewer.
We may mention, too, that each, that this type of system has individual pumps at each residence. So these are individual pumps pumping into one common line and then that line discharges or goes to Regatta Park pump station. So it is received by a city pump station.
And I read that to be those pumps, individual pumps, are owned by the homeowner themselves, correct?
Correct.
And thus responsible for maintenance and repairs of those pumps. So this won't be an impact on city staff. I'm betting there'll be phone calls.
We anticipate phone calls. We also will require that homeowners have an agreement or a way to service any problems that they have, and they are responsible for keeping those pumps functioning.
There are similar pumps. Are there not currently in play around the community now, some, or is this, maybe not to this degree concentration, but this is not something untried or unused in the Lincoln City area? Is that a truism?
That's true. Go ahead.
I know in my, in my capacity, I've designed a number of pressure sewer installations using a different older model type of pump than what we're recommending in the report. It's of, traditionally, these would be higher capacity centrifugal pumps. We're recommending a more 21st century wet well and lower capacity pump so that we can use small diameter sewers instead of large sewers.
So Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just as a point of interest, and I by no means know very much about this, but I've seen pumps in septic systems, grinder pumps, you know, where the drain field is up higher than the outlet of the house, they pump it up there. So I, I think the technology with this would probably be even more refined and trouble-free, you know, cost-effective, cost-effective.
Other questions from council, to Arrakis?
In looking through the agreement, under number 610, for instance, residents are required to, to hook up. Under number 650, basically, it's our authority to require people to hook up to the system or to put themselves into the game, if you will. And I'm wondering what authority do we have to?
Let me, let me address that. This is going to require a change in the ordinance. Currently, the ordinance would require everybody to hook up, I believe, right away. Am I, am I correct on that, Stephanie?
Well, in this case, because it's a pressure sewer system, our ordinance doesn't address required hookups to pressure systems.
Well, then it needs to. At any rate, we're going to need a couple of ordinance changes when this goes forward. One is to define that by ordinance. And two is, the ordinance requires a, I believe it's a 2% premium on financing, over and above the cost of the financing. And the, in order to move this to the private market, rather than have the city use its funds to finance the project, I have recommended that we eliminate that provision in that particular case. So we would have to modify two ordinances that I'm aware of.
And the modification of one of, one of those ordinance would address our ability to require people to do X, Y, or Z?
I, I believe so. Does that make some sense to you, John? We haven't gone very far into that part of this.
I think we'd have to make sure that our ordinances generally will not conflict and specifically will not conflict. And if there's any amendment that we need to make in order to enable the LID, then we would do that as well in the general ordinance. In other words, call it out as a specific exemption.
So we do not require consensus from the district that we are forming?
No, but we've, but this has been sold based on certain parameters. And if we change those dramatically, then we better not assume that it has that kind of support.
Well, it still has to go forward, though, for the city. The city then forms the LID, is what I'm understanding, and notice still goes to all the property owners. So that they can, we haven't had that hearing part of it yet. So that's another step in the process. If for some reason this isn't something they want to do, they'll come in and let you know in the hearing.
Well, I heard Mr. Green say that we've got 25% of the residents in the district who are unwilling to participate.
Well, they will participate if it's formed.
Whether they want to or not, that's correct.
Correct.
And we have the authority to impose that on them, yes? I've got another question on 641 regarding inspections. Will there be an agreement from property owners that they will have their systems inspected? Or we, is that something that we will once again impose on them?
Again, I think I'd better take that.
Go on, please.
That will be, again, an inspection ordinance that we will be bringing forth. So, yes, the answer to the question is we would impose that. Because if we depend on agreements with the property owners, we're not going to get 100% of the property owners to agree to that. And yet, that's what sells to me, this LID, is that we eventually get people hooked up to this. There's no point in seeing this move forward and not have the existing people eventually hook up to it.
No, I would agree, I would agree. But my, my fear is that we're going to have litigation from people who say to us, "You cannot force me to be part of this LID, nor can you force me to hook up to your sewer system."
Well, I think that, being part of an LID is well-settled law. That, LIDs are formed all over the place in the state with less than 100%. I'm sure that's well-settled law, presuming we don't stub our toe on the process.
It's pretty well-settled state law, and our process derives from state law.
Okay. Thank you.
And as to inspection, yeah, that's, that's a separate issue. And I presume that could be challenged. I don't know what the basis for the challenge would be. It's a matter of health and safety. I think we would stand a pretty good, have a pretty good case, but that's a question for attorneys, not for city managers.
Thank you.
And the only additional legal comment I would make is that the 15-year period that would also include the trigger for a property to hook up when it's sold earlier than the completion of that 15-year period, it would be useful to define sale because it's not necessarily an arms-length buyer-to-seller transaction that could constitute a transfer of property. It's a recommendation.
Other questions, observations? David, you were involved in this early on from, I've seen a couple of drafts of the engineering report, and you've sat in on meetings as we're trying to work out some of the triggers. Are there areas in this, I know you've recommended it, but are there soft spots, concerned areas in the report that raised any flags for you? Again, I, I really appreciate the education. It was well-written, easy to read, so I appreciate how it flowed. But I, it's kind of that question of, you know, I don't know what, where the loose link in the chain might be, the weak one, from, from an engineer perspective?
Well, we certainly wanted to be fair to people who have invested $7,000 in an onsite system and gone through the whole permit procedure. And I, as an engineer, I found myself perhaps having more faith in a well-designed onsite system than the city does. But you guys necessarily have to start eliminating these systems in the cities because the lots are too small really to allow an onsite system. So my initial recommendation was that it was going to be totally up to the homeowner's volition whether they, they hooked up or not. And I had to be convinced that we needed some kind of timeline to ensure this 15-year limit, and that would give plenty of people, for people sufficient time to gather the finances to, to make that transition. Other than that, I feel pretty good about the report.
And I'm remembering, too, as, again, for the public and council, one of the earlier discussions was, as Mr. Green brought up, the active life of a system and the, I think, 30 years. And at some point, we, we said, okay, you know, we'll use that. And then we found that most of the systems were already at that level or beyond even now. So I felt real good about extending 15 years because that goes beyond the expected life of, of some of these current systems, so. So it's not like there hasn't been a lot of back and forth and negotiating, and I, again, applaud David's efforts as well as, you know, Mr. Green's efforts in bringing this forth. I guess the question I would, left for me is, by approving this report, we just, it moves to the next step, that just goes from level three to, now to level four on the way to 17. Is that, okay?
Yes.
That's what I'm looking for. So no fireworks, no bells? Chester?
Mr. Hawker, regarding SDCs, are you satisfied that a 15-year, pay the sewer, the SDCs over 15 years would not impact the budget or any other projects we have in mind?
Yeah, this fairly small, I think, the SDC financing, or if you want, deferral or payment over time, is only for two years, for those that connect within the first two years. After that, they pay the SDC. Now, presumably, they can get private financing or, or second mortgage or whatever on a homeowner's loan or whatever for, for that. But as far as the city involvement in taking those payments over time, it's limited to those that hook up for the first two years. That's an incentive to try to get people to hook up, to spread that over an extended period of time. I don't think there'll be that many, but in any event, it's, SDC money for, that comes from, from this, or wastewater SDCs, are reimbursement of, for example, the sewer treatment plant, which we have bonds on for an extended period of time. So I'm not troubled by that at all, is the short answer to your question.
And that, I think, is one of those aspects of it that would require an ordinance amendment so that the city can do that fairly. In other words, with all similarly situated systems. So if somebody else came in similarly, maybe not with an LID, but wanting to hook up with the same pressure sewer issue, then, you know, I think what the city is saying is that the two-year financing makes sense, or the two-year payment schedule makes sense.
At the end of two years, Mr. Hawker, would all property owners owe SDCs who have not?
Only those that, that hook up. They don't owe an SDC until they hook up. So let's say that, that five hook up in the first two years or 10. Those, those can be paid over time to the city. Those later on have to be paid at the time that they hook up.
Okay.
And it's not financed, it's not part of the finance.
Okay, right. Thank you.
But, and don't distinguish, or hopefully you're not distinguishing, or you are distinguishing the difference between the SDCs and the cost of the LID?
Yes.
Okay, that's, sure. Okay? Other questions of staff? With that, then, you know, our action would be to, a motion to approve this report?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I would like to make a motion to approve the report as filed. I'll just keep it simple, that's the end of my motion. And I took notes, we're cognizant of the fact that we may need, and there's, this is step three of 17 steps, and so somewhere along the way, we're going to need some, a couple of ordinance modifications, word definitions.
Right.
More discussion, maybe a little more discussion about SDCs. But along with my motion, I would like to thank Mr. Green and the people that he's been working with for, this has been a multi-year process for them, and they've stuck with it. And I'm hoping that whatever eventually comes out of this could be applied to other areas also. I mean, this, this, I think, is going to be the future of searing in sensitive areas.
Thank you, counselor. We need a second on that motion. We've got a second. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay, hearing none. Report approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks for your work with the community there. All right. Now, we have department committee reports, and we have visitor convention committee, proposed amendments. Welcome back, Sandy.
This is our attempt to try to redraft that ordinance that has been a nightmare for a number of us for a long time. Primarily, the difficulties with it have been that the membership is so restrictive and so large that it's been difficult to get quorums. and so large that it's been difficult to get quorums so that the committee can function at all. It really functions as an advisory board rather than in the way, in the manner that the language is drafted, and voting requirements were pretty stiff. It required three affirmative votes for anything to hap, or five affirmative votes for anything to happen. So Joan Kelsey and I got together and took a stab at it, and the stab is attached. It would have been probably better had we, instead of using the language that vote of the quorum present, it would have been better to define the quorum and then say a majority vote of the members present. That would have worked, right?
Well, correct. She's identified, there's an inadvertent error under 2.24050 in the draft ordinance. I think this is on page three. It says, "Any recommendation of a committee to be effective shall require a majority vote of the quorum present." That was supposed to be members present.
The bad news is, we didn't define what the quorum was. Either way would have worked.
Right.
So we do need, rather than have you sign it as is, we do need to get some kind of an adjustment of that if you're in agreement of going this direction at all.
Yep. Are you, can we make some other suggestions?
Sure.
It's yours.
Okay. Because this is still in that proposed?
Yep.
And I, as we interview for committees, I get a chance to read all these, and I find inconsistency. So I keep trying to think of, is there, when we're doing an ordinance like this, and the one that jumps out is having the alternate committee member. And I know that's from the old days when we're having trouble getting people, so it was kind of a loose vote floating around. Is that still needed when we have, you know, bring this down to seven and widen the territory so membership availability, you know, ought to be there? And I guess, I'm thinking, if somebody agrees to be an alternate, you know, why aren't they a committee member? So it's, it just jumped out at me as unusual. I don't know of any other committee that has it.
It's certainly not as needed.
And it's really not defined. The qualifications of that alternate are not defined at all, which I didn't want to touch.
Well, that was my next.
Because I didn't know what had happened.
So if you said we needed it, I wanted you to go there.
So I would, I think that would be consistent with where you're moving to, would be actually to eliminate that alternate member and then...
I'd love to, if we could.
Assuming that we do that, there is currently an alternate position in existence until the end of next year. Would we terminate that now if that were going to happen?
You could make a provision, if it works, to transfer the remainder of that term or to allow that term to remain.
Okay.
And see what that individual, if we've got, I can't remember the slots that are open, but if they're so willing, maybe there's a spot we can put them into. Because I appreciate somebody that's been tolerant of going and consistent with participating. And I don't mean to wrestle with this, but other counselors, do you have issues that you want to walk through, or I don't want to, okay, I'll walk through mine then. Moving down in that same, it's that membership area, and I'm just wondering, in that first paragraph, under qualifications, Lincoln County voter registration records may be used to determine residency. But that's only if they're a voter.
Right, and that's why it says "may."
Okay.
It doesn't say "shall."
Okay, and so we're not looking as a requirement that they're a voter, because I think that would...
Right. Now, this is just if you're...
Just a place to go, to go, okay?
Yeah, I don't think we can make them vote.
Right. I'm just checking, but, okay, that's, I'm there. So then, I move down, and I like the categories. You've kept the hotels, the, or lodging industry hotel operators, the business owners, and kind of the public at large. I like those. I'm wondering if we've got, as soon as I say that, you know, you're suggesting three members in the hotel operators, you know, I circled that and suggested two. And then two in business, and then went three in the public area, but changed the public area as may or may not be a business or hotel. Because ideally, if we could get three or four business, it'd be great.
Yeah, I actually thought about that. The reason I went the lodging way was because it's transient room tax, and it's collected by lodging, and I just felt like maybe they'd want to have more presence.
And I agree. That's the same, was my reaction, and that's why by changing the public one, if they do, I think as an interviewer, if I had a bunch of candidates, I'd probably move towards moving a hotel business person from the public at large, just for the reasons you've said.
Okay.
So that would need to be, number three item would need to be changed to may or may not, rather than do not own or operate a hotel. It'd kind of flip it the other way and say they could.
So you would prefer to have three members there?
I do.
Okay.
And then the other was the geography, and I wonder if, being consistent, you just plain using the Taft High School district, you know, one in city and, you know, from each category, and then broaden the touch to Taft district, rather than mixing the urban growth boundary in there as well. Because I, I'm remembering again, kind of the argument was, a lot of business people, for example, own, operate, but don't live in the city, and some of them don't even live in the urban growth boundary. They live out a little further.
I would be fine with extending it to the Taft district across the board. That certainly gives us more room to find people to participate.
That's completely up to council.
Well, how does council feel? Do you, I guess, going with that, Sandy, would you, are you still seeing a Lincoln City resident for one of the slots?
It doesn't matter to me. The broader that gets, the more easily we can fill these, and there are those concerns about people who have a vested interest in this place, they just don't, they live a half a mile too far.
And it's, it does solve one real problem, which is people move.
Right.
Yeah.
That's...
That's the real issue.
So if council could think for a minute that, just hypothetically, that willing to move to the only one geography category, and that being Taft High School District, that's Depot Bay North County, as soon as I heard myself say that, I then wrote a note, but for somehow they have to be connected back to the city. And I'm, does it get too cumbersome to say they have to operate or manage or own a hotel or lodging industry or a business in Lincoln City? But my fear is, and it doesn't do us much good, it's not really a fear, but if the Depot Bay person who has a business in Depot Bay, for some reason, wants to get on Lincoln City's VCC committee, seems to be a disconnect, unless that Depot Bay person had a business in Lincoln City.
There are reasons why people might want to, and you've got the whole Lincoln Beach, Glen Eden Beach area also. I start getting a little itchy with the idea of a lodging representative or even a restaurant representative who doesn't have a restaurant or a lodging property in Lincoln City. That makes me a little uncomfortable.
Me too.
So that, that only comes into play, I think, when, in terms of flipping. You ask, is it possible? And I think we can write tho, we can write it to meet exactly what you want. The question is, then, the public members, right now, they're not, and you're suggesting that they could also own a hotel or a business if they're a public member?
Right.
But right now, it would be the urban growth boundary or the city, not the Taft High School District. So you tell us where you want to go, and we'll write it.
Counsel, weigh in.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to spread the, spread the ground as much as we can to include as many people as we can, and at the same time, exclude people who do not have business interests in the city.
So any thoughts on the public category, though? How we might embrace, you know, the retired individual who wants to serve and see this because they have a marketing background or something, but they don't have a business, they live in, say, Glen Eden Beach. How do we tie them back to Lincoln City? Or should we be concerned? That'd be three, those are three slots, three out of seven.
Mr. Mayor, in all likelihood, out of the three, there would just be one person in that, in that particular category. And my thought is...
Meaning not tied back to the city in some way?
Meaning in the Taft, let me see, you have three members, in the Taft High School Unless there is some compelling reason this has to be adopted this evening, I never...
No, this is, this is a draft, so we're drafting.
I mean, maybe we could ask Sandy to think about that and come back to us.
Well, don't...
I've never thought about this before, quite frankly.
Well, it's you guys who are uncomfortable. I've heard Sandy say she'd love to have as wide a spectrum as possible, but shares the concern as we've expressed. So I'm, I'm really kind of gauging your concern, because it's an advisory group to city council.
I'm missing something here. There's also another step here, is don't we have to interview these people?
Oh, correct. You bet.
Wouldn't that be the check right there? That's, that's why I don't know where this conversation is going, but that would be my check right there, is, you know, if you're interviewing the person that doesn't have anything to do with this, then you would say, you know...
Well, you could, I guess, one thing is, we're suggesting, after your last conversation, to reduce the number from nine to seven. Within the seven, I guess, if residency is going to be the Taft High School District for everybody, then that's one qualification. That solves a number of issues. And the only thing really to decide is how many people you want to represent these other categories. It's not, in other words, residency is taken out as an issue. If it's owning or managing a hotel or a motel in Lincoln City, then how many people do you want in that category? We can simply come back and plug those, plug those qualifications again.
Well, I would love to have it loaded, whatever loaded means, but with hotel industry and business. That, to me, would be the prominent group of, of the committee.
So what I heard you suggesting was, two members in the lodging industry, two members who own a, in Lincoln City, who own a business, own or manage a business, not connected with lodging, and then the three members at large could be business, could be lodging, could be anything.
Correct.
Okay. Is, I think we could do that.
As long as they live in the Taft District.
If that's consensus of the council, we'll come, we'll come back with that.
Because Counselor Quant's correct, is still the interview process and all that that goes on as well, so. The objective is to try to get the best people possible in our area to assist us.
Well, that also assists the first gatekeeper, which I think is the city recorder. When an application comes in and she's scanning through it, she needs to know this person could meet either one of two categories, if they own a business. They could be a public member, or they could be the lodging member, for example.
Agreed.
Okay.
Here's one, a repeater question we've had before, says legal. Over on vacancies, the incumbent is absent from meetings for 60 days or more without good cause. I'm wondering, instead of 60 days, it would be so many meetings consecutively?
Uh, yeah, can do that.
Because that's the crucial thing, correct, is, you know, they may be out of town during the week or whatever, but it's meetings, we'd want attendance.
Well...
Okay. Way in?
I guess I'm kind of reluctant to say this, but there can be times when there's internal strife on a committee, and I won't say that that's ever happened in Lincoln City, but it could someday in the future. And a majority could easily call a number of special meetings, one right after the next, and disqualify somebody from service through doing that. I think the time limit, the total time limit, is something that we can live with, whether it's 60 days or whatever it is.
But what I don't understand then, and maybe it's me, is what does 60 days mean? That I'm, you know, I'm, as a committee member, how are you going to know whether I'm here or not in, I missed one meeting?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I'm guessing that the intent, when that was originally done, was that that would encompass two meetings without any excuse, valid excuse. So we could say...
Two regular meetings?
Two regular meetings or 90 days.
That works. That's what I was kind of trying to qualify, something to qualify.
Because two regular meetings can mean at the second meeting, at which you're not there, you've actually gone a period of 30 days, potentially, or 31 days. So it's a much shorter period of time, and that's...
Three meetings or four meetings, some number of regular meetings.
Right.
You can always say two meetings, but at least so many days, so...
Something to that effect, just...
60 days feels too long? Is that...
Well, no, I didn't know how to measure 60 days, though, because I'm, I'm measuring meetings if the person wasn't contributing, not the days in between.
And we don't know how many days they're gone.
Right.
We only know how many meetings they're gone.
Well, we have the same language for the city council.
That's why I bring it up. That's where we dealt with this before.
Absent...
So I'll try to get some refinement here.
It might be on the committee first, but then, moving ahead.
Duly noted.
Okay. I think that's good. You guys all right? Is that...
Yes.
I'm impressed, Mr. ...
Thank you.
The way you looked at this.
Thank you, Sandy.
I think you should work on the senior center community.
Don't, 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 don't...
Your mind is like a steel trap.
Don't go there. Thank you. All right. City manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item, and I think this is mostly just housekeeping, we do have a letter in the packet indicating support from, I believe it's the hospital district, or the hospital, Samaritan. And I believe you have had verbal communications from the tribe. So with those two in place, unless there's some action that council wishes to take, I will go ahead and commit the funding to the program, conditional on them delivering us a report at the conclusion of the, of the program.
And hopefully with good math results.
Right.
How's that reminding council that this was our, we budgeted $5,000, which in years past, we've partnered with the hospital and the Sletz tribe in assisting Taft 712.
And even though it's within my purchasing authority, I don't do donations without council blessing, and I, and again, just bringing it up here, unless there's an objection, I think that's safe enough.
All right. Everybody okay with that consensus? We're there. Thank you, sir.
Few more brief items. One, we have third quarter 2012 VR, excuse me, hotel motel VRD gross room rental numbers in. And I'll furnish this, in fact, I probably ought to put this whole chart on our website if it's not already. But it looks pretty good. I'm just going to run through a few numbers for you. For July, gross rentals were $7,125,000. That's just slightly behind the 2007 number, and it's, it's over every other number since 2007, and it's a 5.27% increase over last year. That's a good number. Then in August, which is our, our big month, that's the one that so many businesses depend on, we had $8,135,000 in gross room rentals, and that's a record. That's a record for the whole time we've, we've kept numbers. And that's an 8.1% increase... And that's an 8.1% increase over last year. And the closest we came, that was 8,135, the closest we came was 2008, $8,100,000. Again, an 8.1% increase over, over last year. And then September, $5,315,000. Again, that's a record, highest for September that we've ever had. And that's 1.48% over last year. For the year-to-date, we're 5.68% above last year through, through three quarters. So that's showing, I think it's showing both some good weather and some improvement in the economy. And I'm seeing some other signs and I'll pass along that information to council.
That is good news. Thank you.
Yeah, it is good. It's not great, it's good. It feels real good. It's probably over, over what we budgeted and we did expect a pretty good recovery or a limited recovery. And I think that was about 5%, as I recall, and we're, we're over that somewhat, so. The other issue, as you know, and I believe most of the public may know, if they don't, here it is, the VRD working group and consultant report has been issued. And I know that council probably wants to get to work on that and thought maybe we could have a workshop. So we checked dates and in January for a workshop on an off week with a consultant. And the purpose of the workshop would just simply be to have Professor Burke, Richard Burke, deliver his report and answer questions, probably a couple hours. Tuesday, January 8th or 22nd worked for him in an afternoon. And, and my apologies to Councilmember Quant, if I get your Tuesday and Wednesday mixed up. I try to get the date and, for the record, if you'll tell, tell us now, if Wednesday's better, I think we can go back to the...
No.
Pardon me?
Wednesday's not better, no.
Okay. So we could do it, and if those two dates don't work, then we'll get some February dates for you.
Good.
I'm good.
You said what dates again?
Eight.
The 8th or the 22nd of January and probably like two to four.
The 8th, I've got a confirmation in Newport.
Okay.
22nd?
Did I have to make that far out? 22nd's fine. No, no problem with 22nd, but the 8th is booked.
Okay. Gary, do you know, or are you all right?
No, I, I stand ready to be available whenever you tell me to.
How about the 22nd, then, if we can go in Chester's fine?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll, we'll get that information out.
That's great.
And if the report isn't on the website, we'll make it so.
And two to four would be the plan?
Does that work for you? We can do it anytime, but...
Sure.
We have planning commission later at 6:00. And I thought we probably, due to the interest in this, I thought we'd probably set up some tables here and televise it.
Okay. Joan?
Okay.
So we're, that'd be good. Okay.
And unless council has time to, an inclination to take public comments, normally workshops are for council to simply study an issue in advance of hearings, in advance of public input. That would be up to you at that time or now, if you wish to make that decision now. But the primary purpose of a workshop is to let council concentrate on a particular single issue and really get their questions answered, so.
Yeah, at this time, I'd say I would call it during that session. Certainly welcome the public, just perhaps not plan on participating.
Okay, so we'll set it up and, Mayor, that's it. Thank you very much.
All right.
Now, Joan, did you have...
You all right? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Mr. Hawker, and I don't know how much extra work it would be, and I'm, I'm really happy, you know, about the increase in the TRT. And I, I had basically come to the same conclusion for July relative to 2007, last, five years ago. And I've actually said that to people who've asked me. So with David having said the same thing, I'm inclined to think that my, my analysis was correct. But I, I'm wondering, for the figures that we're comparing to last year or even if, even as long as five years ago, would there be any way to know if we are renting more rooms now than we were? Or, I mean, we would only know if we have more transient room taxpayers. We wouldn't necessarily know how many rooms they represent.
That is correct.
Because that, that would be an interesting...
And that's an issue we've got to come back to. I'm glad you, you raised it. And that's the occupancy. And we feel that, at least anecdotally, there's been some pretty heavy discounting over the last couple of years. And so if, assuming that's correct and the numbers are just slightly over what they were back in 2007, 2008, you have to assume that there's more people, that there's considerably more people renting at a lower rate. I think that's a reasonable assumption, I can't prove it.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily the city's job to be tasked with researching that.
Well, we would like to know the occupancy.
Any, any additional information, but if it's available, like the number of room taxpayers, one year versus the next, or...
That we might be able to provide you, but it's going to be pretty stable with the exception of VRDs. I mean, there's not many new hotels.
Then, then you can just take the motels and most of the motels have the number of rooms they have published, so you could get that number.
Yeah, we can give you the number of rooms.
It would just, it would be kind of the, you know, some economist looking at that could come to some conclusions that...
Occupancy would, would really be a useful number and we are going to talk to you about that more in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no problem. Thank you. All right. We have then, next item is public hearings. We have a public hearing scheduled, Villages at the Cascade Head, Rock Creek Village, to review a planning commission decision approving a two-year extension of the land use approvals with conditions. And at the request of staff and the developer, request for continuance to next month, December 10th, 2012, at this setting, 6:00 PM. Is consensus okay to continue or does it need a motion?
It should be a motion. A motion.
Oh, a motion?
To continue it to the next meeting.
So I'd entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until December 10th, 2012, 6:00 PM, these chambers.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay, hearing none, thank you. And we have a resolution for adoption, resolution number 2012-25, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City adopting the Lincoln City Walking and Biking Plan. And this has come before us numerous times with editing and then this is the final report.
You just have in front of you a slightly revised version and the, a copy of the Walking and Biking Plan is, is here in the room, so it's incorporated into this resolution.
Okay. Do I need to do anything to sort? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the resolution of the City of Lincoln City adopting the Lincoln City Walking and Biking Plan, resolution number 2012-25.
As revised.
As revised. Gotcha.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the Lincoln City Walking and Biking Plan, attached BID-A, incorporated herein by reference, serve as a guide for improving walking and biking facilities within the urban growth boundary.
Voice or roll call?
Voice.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed with a nay, hearing none, thank you. And let's see, this would be another opportunity for comments from the public at large. Those who missed the opportunity earlier, now would be a great time. Hearing none, we'll take comments from council. It's small, a few as we are. Gary, what, what do you have?
I've just been enjoying this good weather.
Okay.
Hope you are too, wherever you're at.
Mr. Narikas?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Quant?
Nothing tonight?
Nothing.
Nothing.
I only have two items. One, I'd like to point out to the listening public, if they've missed it, that the Lincoln City Transportation System Plan is underway and organized with a bunch of citizens that are participating. The plan, early drafts, can be found on lincolncitytsp.org. So if you go on, can we link through the city website to this plan? Or do you have to go direct? Probably go direct, but it's...
The biking plan?
I don't know where it would show up.
Oh, I, we'll make it...
We'll make it so.
Whether it's actually on our site or, or it's on some, some other site that shows on our site, it looks the same. We'll get it there.
Get it, so easy to find and...
Right.
So we're trying to push everybody to the Lincoln City site and then find everything you want from there. You know, the, the other item I have, and this, I would hope there'd be interested people out there, this doesn't happen until December 10th. Actually, it's a week-long event at Taft High School and it's the College Application Week. What the Taft has been designated or was selected by the Oregon University System and the Oregon College Application Week Steering Committee to be a pilot school for this activity. And the activity is to get every senior in high school applying for either a college or trade school or some kind of advanced education. And the administration could use the assistance of the general public and would love to hear from those who could volunteer and be of assistance. Vicki Roller is the contact person at 541-996-2115. And I'm not sure specifically what the requirements are or the assistance, but I thought I would venture in as well and see what it's like to make a college application these days. It's been a while. Hope others would as well. And then finally, reminding the citizens and council that there are a lot of activities going on through this next holiday period. Most of them are fundraisers, fundraisers for major nonprofits in our community that actually turn your money back into good service in the community. And I'd encourage all who could to get out and participate with those activities. With that...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Do you have a comment?
Please.
In Saturday's News Times, there was a front page article with a headline stating that the city council had voted to annex Rhodes End. The city council has not voted to annex Rhodes End. That information was incorrect.
Thank you, sir. Stand adjourned. Thank you and good evening.